Okay, thank you, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the September 26, 2024 executive session of the Clarksville City Council. Before we get into our agenda, we have a couple of presentations to make, and I'm going to call on Councilperson Little in the well. Councilperson Little, you're recognized in the well for a presentation.
Thank you. I got Mayor Pitts coming down this way.
Yeah, it doesn't go.
So today, we just want to take time to honor and show respect and appreciation for somebody who has contributed greatly to our community, to a lot of people who now own their own businesses, who never have to worry about not owning, who never have to worry about where their name is signed, or senior dollar is coming from. We want to give honor and reverence to Mr. Payne and his family, and also to the Queensville College. You can come on down and let me hear you.
Oh, man.
Do what you see. I was personal. So first, we want to show recognition to you, and so this is from the City of Clarksville with certificate of recognition to Ralph and Laura Payne, Queensville College. A recognition of your dedicated service and contributions to the City of Clarksville. Thank you for your efforts to provide opportunities for growth to the citizens in our community, your impact on our beloved city, deeply appreciate. Thank you. I think I will say for our best to mayor for the proclamation is I truly honor and respect you, and I was young when I came to your school, and no matter what you said, everybody could be taught to cut, and everybody can't cut. And there's a lot of times when, in that school, I know myself, if we were, what I'd say, wild. I think a crazy story is I actually put a hole in his front wall.
You see the tool?
You know about it, and I didn't. And so, but no matter what, he never kicked me out, he just, I have just some extra work, but he never kicked me out, he believed in me. And to this day, I owe my cutting experience to you. Thank you.
And Ralph, it's my honor on behalf of the City Council and the entire City of Clarksville presenting you in Queensville College as proclamation, to just say thank you for your countless contributions. If you're here as a part of Ralph, Queensville, please stand so you can say thank you.
Oh, that's awesome.
It's a small sample of what you've done to make this a good event. So thank you.
I'd like to say thanks to Mayor, to Ralph, all of that done in the city. These guys have helped us out, appreciate it. We noticed a lot of the people from North City, out in higher, well, campus, New Rogers, we're halfway in the point, but they just enjoyed so much. They're having worked for 40 years, and Queensville College been there teaching these young guys how to deal with their customers, their company, and even with the league, even though they're now in the best record. I tell you, they worked off.
Okay, let's get a photograph, and then we'll proceed. Is that all right?
All right.
Just a little bit.
For... You can email me for hair care tips after the meeting.
I know.
Yeah, that must be weird.
Not playing musical chairs.
Mark and I can cut hair, but we can only give one haircut.
I didn't mean to laugh out loud, but...
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we have another presentation, but we will wait until Councilperson Allen arrives. But just housekeeping notes to, as a reminder, restrooms are to the council's left and to the public's right. All, well, no votes tonight. We, all the microphones will be hot tonight, so just beware. Raise your hand if you'd like to be recognized, and I'll make a list and keep my head on a swivel. And if you're not using a city issued iPad, you may experience a glitch. And then please silence all cell phones. All right. We are now ready for the planning commission report. Mr. Tyndall? First item on the list is item A, ordinance 23, 24, 25. And before you start, I have another announcement, if I may. Our city clerk was just elected vice president of the Tennessee Association of Municipal Clerks and Recorders today at their meeting in Fall Creek Falls. Let's, let's give her a round of applause. They recognize greatness when they see it. Mr. Tyndall, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. A little different being on this side of the podium down here. Yeah, turn this one up a little bit. You got it? More, a little more. Give them a little base. Do you do it?
I don't think it's on, no. Testing. That, we got it? Okay. I'll just stay close here and get through this. Okay, that's working. That's a, that's a good start. There we go. Our first case tonight is Z 33, 2024. It's ordinance 23, 2024, 25. The applicant is Blackjack Investments LLC. The agent is Chris Goodman with Civil Site Design Group. This is one parcel totaling 20.87 acres. It's currently R1 and requesting to go to R4 multifamily residential district. It is an extension of the R4. The property is located on the northern frontage of Ashland City Road, approximately 725 feet west of Ashland City Road and Rosewood Drive intersection. It's a tract of land with moderate incline and a single-family home on site. This is in Council Ward number seven. It's in our Hilldale Planning Area. The applicant's statement is rezoning the property for town, town home construction. It does have a previous zoning history back in 1980. And there is the extension of R4 across the street and to the west. Of note, there is a small FEMA flood zone that does impact this property. As you can see, it's just the western boundary. There's a small stream that comes off the Cumberland River here. They will have to take that into account for any development they do. They won't be able to touch that. If they alter it, they'll have to get a letter of map revision, but it only encumbers approximately two acres of the entire 20 acres of the site. Here's the site on Ashland City Road, or the bypass as we call it. This is directly across the street from a new subdivision called Windcliff, which you've seen the sign out there. And this is looking from, I believe Beacon Drive, looking down south toward it. Rosewood would be on that, across the street there. All right, department comments and concerns. The street department required a traffic assessment. It was received and accepted. Their comment was, there's a blue line stream along the western property line. Stream buffers will be required upon further development of the site. FEMA flood zone impacts the property, and so is the road out there underneath, underneath the road. There's no other city department comments or concerns, and the school system noted their capacities of their schools listed there. The impact of this would be the increase of multifamily residential density. Historical estimates would put this at approximately 250 units. Again, we mentioned this is in our Hilldale Planning Area. This is also in the mixed residential future land use of our comprehensive plan. Staff does recommend approval. The request is consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. This property is within the Hilldale Planning Area, and the future land use opinion map identifies the future land use as mixed residential neighborhood. The Hilldale Planning Area and mixed residential neighborhood indicate that multifamily is an appropriate use for this tract of land. This tract is adjacent to a future greenway extension along the eastern boundary of the property. Higher residential density is appropriate when adjacent to and in close proximity to greenways and trails. Traffic assessment has indicated that a right turn lane should be provided on the westbound approach to the site, the intersection of Ashland City Road and the site, and a southbound approach to the primary site drive should include a minimum of one entering and one exiting lane. This property does have a blue line stream and a FEMA flood zone impact. While these encumbrances exist, there's more than adequate area remaining to develop the property. The planning commission also recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Tyndall. Councilperson Shekinah?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tyndall, I have two questions for you. You mentioned the FEMA flood zone sits on about two acres. Is there any way they can mark off this, this area to make sure they don't do anything in this area before we go further down the road, before we have some problems later?
We don't require that, and I'll defer to the street department. I'm not exactly sure the details of getting a grading permit, but FEMA flood zone and avoiding that area is probably required in there. A pair of the, if the council member would like to hear from the street department, I'd defer on that question.
Please, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Smith, while you're here and talking about that, he said the magic phrase, which is traffic assessment, and I know we've made some changes.
We have.
Regarding assessment and study, so after you answer his question, if you could go into that briefly. Councilperson Shekinah, if you don't mind.
Yes. Mr. Smith, Mr. Tyndall mentioned the FEMA flood zone sits on about two acres.
It does.
Of this, of this 20 acres. Is there any way that it could be required for them to mark off or fence off this particular area to, you know, to make sure they don't build on it? Because if they do, we may have some more flooding situations.
Yeah, sure, there are requirements far taller than what we impose locally. So the Corps of Engineers, as those are wires in the state, and TDEC both have as much sway or more sway than we have on this property. But the delineation of that area will be on the plans, and there'll be erosion control measures and stuff like that in place to isolate that area.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Now, if you don't mind, go into the changes we've made in assessment and studies based on some requests.
Sure. Councilman Zacharias brought up some time ago, some concerns at a council meeting about the existing guidelines that we had for assessments and the potential conflict of interests that existed therein. Very generically, I want to touch on assessment versus study, because I hear it frequently, if I may. In assessment, commonly you see at this level at rezoning, it is a very, very general, it's a document, it's very few pages, and it just speaks to the potential uses of what might occur on the site. But as you know, C2 could do anything from townhomes to, you know, strip centers and that sort of stuff. So those are very, very bland. When they get to our level, traffic impact studies or TIS, that's when we see these, you know, 90, 100-page documents that include the average daily counts, and that's where traffic signals and that sort of stuff come in. So that's the distinction between those two things. When we talk about a traffic study, there's two different terms that apply in those circumstances. But we add some language, we attribute, it's just an internal policy, so it doesn't have to come before the council. But in essence, if a developer is required to do an assessment, and they're using a firm that we believe, or they have identified has a conflict, they have to have a third party also vet that analysis and determine that it is in fact valid. So there is, there are some controls now in place that should that potential conflict, and again, that's a potential conflict of interest exists, that we have some controls.
Councilperson McLaughlin?
On this part, on this topic, who determines that there's a potential conflict?
So they can identify one, or we, the members of the street department, if we're familiar or we're aware or there's a concern, we can identify that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions about this top? Councilperson Holloman on this topic?
No, not, not on this topic.
Okay, okay. Any more questions for Mr. Smith?
I think...
Oh, Councilperson Markey?
Yeah, I think mine goes a little similar with one of the previous council members. Is there a requirement for distance where they would have to build away from the flood plain?
There are buffer distances and areas that cannot be disturbed, et cetera. And that's mentioned, Mr. Tyndall mentioned, the stream buffer requirements and so on have to be adhered to. So we have general comments. Depending on what they intend to do, that answer may vary. But yes, there are buffer requirements.
Okay, can we have like a number on, for example, what that buffer would look like?
It would depend on the particular feature. I can get that information for you.
Okay.
Depending on what that, whether it's a, whether conveyance, a stream, a blue line stream, you know, a true waterway or whatever, it would, that buffer distance varies.
Okay, yeah, I guess, yeah, you can send that to us. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Other questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, thank you. I think we had questions from council members for, for you, Mr. Tyndall. Councilperson Holloman, you're recognized.
I had two questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Pardon me. You still have the floor.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tyndall, also, this is being proposed for R4, and they're talking about 200 townhomes. But could they also do mixed? Could they do apartments and townhomes?
Planning Commission doesn't really differentiate between whether it's built sideways or vertically, whether it's condos or apartments or townhomes. And sometimes in this town, townhomes will be sold off individually, or maybe rented out, or bought and rented out. So we don't really speak to whether it would be a rental or an ownership situation. The rendering I have seen for this site is terraced out townhomes up the hillside. So not an apartment building, but town, individual townhomes.
So if there was to build apartments on this, how many apartment units could they build?
The maximum you can get is 16 per acre. So you're talking about 320-ish if they maxed it out. I think our historical estimate is usually around 12, because we would get a lot of townhome development, and that's per the number we gave you a little earlier of 250.
Thank you, Mr. Tyndall. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Councilperson Holloman now.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tyndall, do you know if the developer has any plans for any like buffer for sound and light pollution, where it backs up to the, to the surrounding neighborhood?
Sure. The benefit they have is the terrain here. So the property is lowest to the east and to the south, and then it's highest to the north point there. There's an old rail bed that actually runs to the east that they've already transferred. So it was part of the original properties, about four acres, that has been transferred to the Aspire Foundation to hold for future greenway connection. There's a development on the other side that has held the land. This eventually could be a nice portion of three to four mile greenway, working with the county, that would actually get you from the lows on Madison Street out to the city limits, or even further into the county. So the berm is actually built up where the old train trestle was. So there's actually a very nice, natural, or man-made, I guess, berm between the neighborhood to the east and this property to the west. And the neighborhood sits much higher, and this sits much lower. So I think you have some pretty good terrain to work with here. It's not as flat as it would look like on the map.
Okay, and let's just say, let's just say if we voted to rezonate to, to R4, and then the developer says, well, I'm going to put apartments here, would that require a new traffic assessment?
Yeah, they, they will give us a traffic assessment based on the max density of 320 units, as I mentioned. So regardless of if those units are townhomes or apartments, they operate so similarly, we wouldn't require a new traffic assessment. Okay, thank you.
Councilperson Markey?
I think Mr. Smith answered what I had.
All right, any more comment or question? Councilperson Zacharias?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking at this map, and if this rezoning application goes through, it's going to leave like an island of R1 behind it. I'm assuming that, that is same owner, same property?
It is not. That property is actually accessed to the north. The terrain out here is, is pretty wild. It rises very quickly to the north, and that is accessed off that small road. I can't read it here.
Paradise Hill.
Paradise Hill, yes. It's an unimproved portion of Paradise Hill up there that would access that northern property, but that, that is not the same owner.
All right. In your opinion, are we hurting that property owner's ability to develop that property if we sort of make it an island out there?
It's, it's very slopy, to use that term. If this were developing as a subdivision, it'd be even difficult to get a road to continue up there. It's, it's straight up a hill. So I think this developer, you know, should this other person behind them want to rezone to R4, add some property to this, you might be able to squeeze out some more units. But there's a reason that portion of Paradise Hill has never actually been completed up there either. That's a very difficult terrain to develop on up there.
Thank you. Any other comment or question regarding this ordinance? Okay, we're now ready for item B, ordinance 24, 25, 24, 25. Mr. Tyndall, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This is planning commission case Z 34, 2024. This is the application of Marvin Curtis Merrill. Agent is Merrill Holmes. This is .59 acres, so just over a half acre. Currently zoned R1 and requesting to go to R2D. So we haven't had an R2D application in a while. That is duplexes only. It's a 50-foot wide lot for two duplexes, or one duplex, two units. So that's, only allows duplexes, doesn't allow you to build anything else. It is not an extension of the R2D. The property fronts Old Trenton Road, approximately 1,370 feet west of the Wilmer Rudolph Boulevard, Old Trenton Road intersection. The property is a relatively level single-family home site with some mature trees. This is in Council Ward number nine. It's in the St. Bethlehem Planning Area. Applicant's statement, we purchased a dilapidated single-family home that we would like to demo and construct a duplex. It does not have any previous zoning history. This is Old Trenton Road out there with Wilmer Rudolph at your back, and the property is right there tucked back. It's an older, small home on that .59 acres. And looking across the street, and down the road a little bit. The street department has stated that five-foot sidewalk would be required upon development. And we did not receive any other department comments or concerns. The school system listed their capacities there of their schools of concern for this property. Important to note, the planning commission will not see a site plan on a duplex, but if they divide the lot, which we anticipate they would divide, divide this into two parcels and build two duplexes, so four total units, we will see the subdivision, and that's when the sidewalk requirement would be imposed as part of the construction of the duplexes. Impact of surrounding development would be slight increase to residential density. Again, the applicant has said two units. We think four total units, and that may be semantics where he's talking about two duplexes and we're saying four total units. At most, you'll get, at the minimum, you'll get one duplex. At most, you'll get two duplexes. It's not physically possible to get any more than the two out there. As I mentioned, this is in the St. Bethlehem Planning Area and is in our suburban neighborhood future land use map. The staff does recommend approval. The request is consistent with the overall objectives of the Clarksville Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan. In the St. Bethlehem Planning Area, the general land use goals recommend a promotion of multifamily in close proximity to major roads, existing jobs, and commercial nodes. The future land use opinion map indicates that the future land use is suburban neighborhood, and mild residential density increases are appropriate in this future land use as you transition from commercial corridors such as Wilmer Rudolph, that is to the east of the property. There's no adverse environmental issues identified with this property, and the planning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Tyndall. Councilperson McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Tyndall, this would be the first duplex in this area, correct? This duplex zoning?
Correct.
So that would potentially open it up for more in the area, especially like the C2, you can already put R4 on at the backside that's adjacent to. So this would open the door for more R2D in this area, correct?
We, we took the C2 proximity there and its ability into consideration that just 100 feet to the east is available to build townhomes and duplexes on there. The answer is yes, and that's why it's up to the commission every time there's a zone change, whether you feel that the next one's appropriate or the next one's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Any more comment or question regarding this, this ordinance? Councilperson Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there residents that live around that area? Have they been notified, or are there any complaints, any oppositions?
Of course they've been notified. We did send the letters out, and there's been a sign on the property for the last two to three weeks. We did not have anyone speak at the meeting, or we have not received any emails either.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any more comment or question regarding this ordinance? Seeing now we're ready for item C, ordinance 25, 24, 25. Mr. Tyndall?
Thank you, Mayor. Z 35, 2024, from the planning commission, going up Wilmer Rudolph just a little bit there. This is the application of Mark Bullock. This is two parcels totaling .46 acres. Currently zoned R1 and requesting to go to R6, single-family residential district. It is an extension of the R6 in the area. The property fronts the north frontage of Ross, West Rossview Road, 775 feet west of Wilmer Rudolph Boulevard and West Rossview Road intersection. It's two single-family lots. One single-family home is on site. The other lot is vacant. This is in Council Ward number 11. It's also in the St. Bethlehem Planning Area. The applicant's statement is, this would be an extension of R6 from the property to the north. We would like to split the property into three lots for the opportunity of building affordable housing. And there's the zoning map. You can see there's a previous R6 zoning case on the corner just to the northwest of it, and there's R4 on the road and across Fairview Lane up there. This is West Rossview Road as you leave Wilmer Rudolph Boulevard. There's the home in question that would be torn down as part of this rezoning and subsequent subdivision of these two parcels into three. And I will say, the applicant said three. They could do four with the amount of frontage they have, but their statement and their statement from the floor at the planning commission was three. Going down a little further. The street department stated that four-foot sidewalk would be required as part of the development, and no other comments or concerns, and the school system provided their capacities other schools listed. The proposed impact on the surrounding development would be increased single-family density. Historical estimates would put this at three to four units. It's in the St. Bethlehem Planning Area. It's also in the urban neighborhood future land use. Staff does recommend approval. This request is consistent with the overall goals and objectives of the Clarksville Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan. These two lots are indicated on the future land use opinion map as being part of an urban neighborhood. Moderate density and small, single-family lot development are appropriate in this land use. The request has access to an existing infrastructure and other residential supportive uses such as mass transit and retail nearby. This request is in character with the surrounding development pattern, and no adverse environmental issues were identified. The planning commission also recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Tyndall. Councilperson McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. R6 was a hot topic last month, and I wasn't here when R6 came about, and I was just wondering if there might be a way for you all to kind of provide us a timeline of when R6 started sprawling outside of the, the CDID or the downtown area into what I wouldn't consider being qualified for that. Just maybe if we all could get some information on that. Because, you know, we're hearing a lot of different things from a lot of different people, and when I came back on the council, I had to learn about R6, and I really thought it was for infill development in our city center area. And now, since the last meeting, I've looked, and it's pretty much spotted all over the city in different places, and I wouldn't imagine that was the original intent of R6, but I don't know the history, so I'm just kind of looking for some education on how that happened. I don't think you were here, were you here when that happened?
No, and if you're done with your question?
Okay. That concludes my question.
I'll give you some anecdotes here, and we'll definitely be able to type up a little more detail on this. I started in 2018, March 18, there'd already been some R6 developments. It was something Dr. Ripple did, so he worked the five years prior. So at the earliest, it was 2014, 2015. I think it was actually 2016 when it was officially passed. It was not used much those first four or five years. And with the way our economics have gone with the housing market, and the rates especially, it's become, as land has gotten more expensive, the more you can do with land makes things at least stay semi-affordable for as long as possible. at least stay semi-affordable for as long as possible. I had this question when Councilmember Valerie Guzman was on the council. We had an R6 case once, and I remember her looking right at me and saying, "Isn't this supposed to be for downtown?" So it got us looking. And if you look at the definition of R6 and you look at the guidance of R6, it doesn't say downtown anywhere in it. It just says that it should have residentially supportive uses, be near mass transit, and commercial uses. So more of a walkable environment. And we agree at the planning staff, that's why every time R6 comes, we'll mention walkability, transit, or retail as at least two of those three things we want to see in a certain area. So when we look at this area, you know, you're about 750 feet from Wilma Rudolph Boulevard. There is transit stops out there. There's retail on the corner. There's sidewalks for most of that portion out there. So we feel that adding density from two homes to maybe four is completely in line with the urban neighborhood designation out there.
Okay, and follow-up. Thank you for the explanation. Follow-up is that one of our other members had asked about sidewalks for a case that was in front of us last month. And typically, you know, we hear all the time here sidewalks are required, but then somehow they don't happen. And I specifically drove Ward 6 after the council member from that ward brought up that discussion last month, and there are plenty of R6 lots that have been developed with no sidewalks. So I'm saying here on the record, I'd like anybody that has the authority to waive sidewalks when it's required to really have explanation as to why and have that be checked by the Street Department. Because, you know, one goes in and then nothing happens for a few years, and now you've got six in a row over off of Reynolds Street with no sidewalks. So that's something that if sidewalks are required, I think we all agree, there should be a really good reason as to why they don't go in.
Only clarification there, the sidewalk will be built as the homes are built.
Correct. Yeah, there are completed R6 homes with no sidewalks in front of them. And in one, on one block, there's six in a row that don't happen, so.
We'll look into that with our partners.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Smith is just aching to get up here again? No? Okay.
I can answer that one too. I was at the Parks Department at the time as the director. So R6 sidewalks are a little unique, and some of those subdivision sidewalks are because they're required by zoning. So we have a sidewalk ordinance in the city that says sidewalks are required in these circumstances, but specifically the R6, there is no exemption. They're required by zoning. So what is the board that can overrule the zoning? The Board of Zoning Appeals. So when those cases came before, they were presented to BZA. BZA waived the sidewalk requirement in the Red River on many of those cases.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. It was done the right way. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you got a question for Mr. Smith? Okay. So you jumped up. Mr., Councilperson Smith?
Mr. Smith? I heard you said someone waived having sidewalks over there, but I didn't understand what you said. Could you repeat that?
Absolutely. So the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Oh, the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Correct. They're a board that can grant latitude, if you will, about any of the zoning provisions within reason. And they've got some direction they receive annually from legal and from the Planning Commission on what those grounds are.
If you please get us a copy of why no sidewalks were required in Ward 6?
Sure.
Get us, you know, some information on that. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Speaking of the Board of Zoning Appeals, Bobby Powers was a pillar of our community. He served faithfully on many of the boards and commissions in our community. His son Bryce is in the audience, and we just want to say to the Powers family how deeply sorry we are. You have our prayers and condolences for the death of Bobby Powers. Mr. Tyndall? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilperson Chikina had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tyndall, a couple of questions for you. On the previous case, the sidewalk requirement was five. This one is four. Y4 and Y5?
I'd have to ask Mr. Smith to come back and answer that one. That was brought to us by the Street Department. I think it has to do with what's nearby, but I don't think.
He just wants to show off his red shirt. Go ahead. Councilperson Chikina?
Yes, Mr. Smith. On the previous case, the sidewalk requirement was five feet. This one is four feet. Y4, Y5?
So internally for us, it's based on largely the speed limit and the number of vehicles that travel that roadway. Will they give that guidance? So interior subdivisions and that sort of stuff, lower count roads have a smaller design protocol.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Tyndall, these houses, the three houses, are they gonna be, they're not gonna be facing the road, all three, right? From the way this, the two lots are situated. Look like it's one lot in front of the other lot, so the lots go back from the road. And I drove over there and looked at it.
Two lots side by side right here.
But if you put three houses, you can put three houses there?
They will have to come back for a re-subdivision. They'll tear the home down, they'll move the lot lines, and then we'll review it here with the Street Department and our other departments to make sure that can happen. And I said you can get up to four actually, because it's, they're 50-foot each. So if they build three, they'll have 33-foot wide lots, they can do down to 25-foot wide lots. Based on who applied, I think the type of home he builds is going to be more of the wider ones, but he indicated three lots on this. But it would be three individual houses, three driveways, all facing the road.
And then my last question, and it's regarding the Board of Zoning Appeals. You know, this, I don't know when the timeline is going to be for this property, but if he requests an exemption through the Board of Zoning Appeals, that means I got to watch the agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals every month to make sure he's not trying to get it by me, right? Because I want to be at that meeting if he requests it. Is there any way that we can be notified when these cases go before the Board of Zoning Appeals?
I mean, besides watching the agenda, because that's what we do at the Planning Commission as well, we do get review sheets from the Board of Zoning Appeals for all the cases for the month. That's something new they've started. I do appreciate that, appreciate that they do that, because it lets us see what each applicant wants instead of just reading what's on the agenda, which isn't always easy to understand, but. Besides remembering that you want to know about this one, and if I ever see this one come up giving you a call, I don't think there's a way to follow up on that. I will say, the Board of Zoning Appeals has only granted a few of those, and it's been very rare. I don't think it's their position, nor would it be the Planning Commission's to ever waive it. And I think the sidewalk ordinance that we had earlier discussed this year might have gone into a little more detail on that, but it's something we can revisit in the future.
Yeah, because I think if we're approving something and it says sidewalk requirement, then they need to live up to their obligation. They need to put a sidewalk there, whether the other sidewalks are not.
I will note, we did it, if you see this map, the top left corner, they managed to put it for all those, and those are R6 homes up there. So I don't see why we won't be able to accomplish it on this property.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comment or question regarding this ordinance? All right, we're now ready for item D, ordinance 272425. Mr. Tyndall?
Mayor, I believe this one's going to have to get pulled for a month due to a technicality.
Excuse me, sir.
Councilperson Streetman?
Are you done?
That's all I needed to say.
What's the technicality? Because we're already at, it'll be five years this coming December, so what else is there possibly necessary to do?
It was brought to my attention today that one of the meetings we had with the Land Regulation Advisory Committee, which we had some members participate virtually, which used to be a thing, is no longer allowed per state law. And we basically, because the Planning Commission and the Common Design Review Board could have taken their opinion into their consideration, and that meeting wasn't done properly, we had to go back and do that meeting properly and then go to the Common Design Review Board, back to the Planning Commission to bring it back to City Council.
I understand all that, but the final vote comes to here. So, I mean, to me, we've already stalled on this long enough with it being five years. I think it's on the agenda. It should be presented tonight. And I think you even stated in the Regional Planning Commission, or maybe it was the Design Review Board meeting, I can't remember which, I watched one and was part of the other, but you even stated that the Regional Planning Commission is listed as the agent. But really, this is an ordinance that's being brought forward by the City Council. Like I said, this was voted on in December of 2019. If the first reading isn't until next month and it does pass and it passes on two readings, it'll be five years before it can go into effect. So I think we need to move forward and allow us to make our own decisions, because we're the ones that have to make the decisions on it anyway.
Mayor, I defer the city attorney, because we've been discussing this today about the legality of moving forward when there is a meeting violation that we've had here going forward.
Okay, Mr. Bittner, if you don't mind, bring some clarity to the.
And for the record, we are prepared to go forward if that's the case, but I believe in our discussions, that is not the case, that it is proper for this.
Okay. Mr. Bittner, if you don't mind?
My advice to Mr. Tyndall was that we go back and substantially, have a substantial discussion on the issue at hand and then re-vote on it, and then that re-vote goes back to the, recommendation goes back to the RPC for consideration.
Councilperson Streetman, you have the floor.
I appreciate that, but if the vote is voided, the vote is voided. There is still time between now and next week for them to be able to have that. I don't know if it would change anything on the Regional Planning Commission anyway. That came through as a disapproval. It was a tie vote. It didn't seem like anybody that was on the Regional Planning Commission that voted in favor of disapproval would change their opinion. So I don't know that anything would make a difference. I still believe that we should move forward with this.
Anything else, Mr. Bittner?
Yes, so under the Open Meetings Act, the governing body definition fits what this committee was. And in my opinion, as you stated, this recommendation of disapproval would have been voided. So my advice to Mr. Tyndall was that we take it back and give it a substantial discussion re-vote.
I understand them voting in person. I hear you on that. But everybody else voted in person. We all followed what the rules were for it, both in the Regional Planning Commission. We followed those rules. It appeared from watching online that the design, the Common Design Review Board followed the rules. They voted in person as they should have voted. Everything else is just a recommendation. Our vote's the one that counts.
Okay. Again.
That's fine. I understand, sir. I can agree to disagree with you.
That's true.
Councilperson Zachariah, she recognized.
I've just got a simple question along these lines. Are we at risk of losing a lawsuit if we proceed without?
Correct.
Again. My advice to Mr. Tyndall was. This is a potential violation of the Open Meetings Act, and we need to take it back, re-discuss it and re-vote.
Councilperson Allen?
So, next week it's meeting. Do we just vote to send it back, or what are we doing? Do we just send it back?
It's being removed from the agenda, so it won't be on next week's agenda.
So it won't be on here at all?
That's correct. It'll come back next month.
Okay, any more? Councilperson McGlaughlin, you're recognized.
Thank you. Actually, I made questions for you, Mayor. So based on what Mr. Bittner's recommendation is, if we can get that NCT to meet, is it possible to have a special session on an executive session so we get two readings taken care of closer together so that we're not stretching this out longer than what Councilmember Streetman had mentioned?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comment or question? Okay. Mr. Tyndall, does that conclude your report? All right, we're going to go back and make, recognize Councilperson Allen. You have a special guest or guests. You're recognized.
Hello. So last week, I mean, last month at the regular session, I discussed talking about a female football team here in Clarksville. Well, I figured that they should be able to come and introduce themselves. So Mr. Tyrone Fields, he is the coach, and I do not know the young lady's name that is with him, because I have not had an opportunity to meet her, but I know she's the owner, right? Rachel. And they're here to tell us a little bit about the women's football team that is locally here, semi-pro. So I'd love to hear about it, because I'm a football fan.
So you're recognized in the way, and welcome.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pitts, Councilmen and Councilwomen. My name is Rachel Ortiz Marsh. I am the owner, as Councilwoman Allen referred to, of the Tennessee Trojans. We are a franchise team of the Women's National Football Conference, which is literally the most competitive women's tackle football league in the world. We have eight gold medal, USA Gold Medals. Right now, I am a citizen and continue to plan to be a citizen of Clarksville. I'm a 22-year-old, 22-year veteran of the military. I live here. I want to bring the team here. Right now, we're based out of Nashville. There are three women's tackle football teams in Nashville. Exactly. That look right there. What is our goal? What do we want to do? We want to empower women and girls through the power of sport, to break down barriers, challenge inequality using football. How do we do that? We do that through teamwork, competition, and impactful community engagement. And that's the one thing that I feel that I have not been able to bring to this city, being a resident of the city. No one on this council, with the exception of two, because I've met Joe before, know that we exist and I live here. We have so many opportunities to bring to young girls, to show them what it looks like. I'm the first Latinx owner of a team, franchise team. We have a franchise license. Women's football has been around for 30 years. I have a signed partnership with Play Like a Girl, which is a national nonprofit. We partner with Got Her Back, which is, we do camps for young girls. Like football, as you know, has taken off, very, very prominent. And the proof is in the pudding in the research. Young girls turn into strong, powerful women in leadership positions when they have played sports. Almost 90% of young women and girls that play sports grow up and become leaders in their communities. I'm an example of that. I came from very humble beginnings. I now hold three degrees, right? I'm a retired military vet, and I have the opportunity to say I am the first female Latinx woman to own a franchise sports team in the state of Tennessee. You don't have to have a silver spoon to get somewhere and do something and impact your community. And we want to be able to build bridges with the community. I want to be able to build bridges with this community where I live and bring that here so that this community can enjoy what we are building with the Tennessee Trojans. I'm open to whatever questions you have.
Okay, any questions from council? Councilperson Smith?
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. I never thought you played football. You look too pretty. But my concern is this, we don't have many football fields. We just opened one for the first time in Clarksville, Tennessee. And so you think that we will have the facility enough to accommodate your women's football team with the one football team we, I mean, field we have here? We just opened one this year. Only one.
So I can answer that question very well. We actually have already played here two years in a row. And what we have done is we have reached out to APSU. We secure a field date, and our game is Military Appreciation Night. And so we've already been successful here.
So you'd be playing at Austin Peay? Y'all would be using that football field?
We would request.
Oh, be specific.
We would request to play there on a specific date. However, it would be great if I could relocate the team here. That is ultimately what I'm saying, is that we are, the WNFC has 17 franchise teams that stretch from Seattle, Washington, all the way to Jacksonville, Florida. In our conference alone, where we travel and the teams that we play are located in Chicago, New Jersey, Washington DC, Atlanta, and Jacksonville, Florida. And then obviously, those teams come here to Tennessee. We have a six-game schedule. That's three home games. So we play one here and two in Nashville.
That's good. You'll be using Austin Peay, because we're not equipped here in Clarksville to accommodate such a grand team that you're trying to bring here. We don't even have bleachers over there, less than a marked football field. So we requested some bleachers, but they have not popped up yet. Hopefully, we'll have some funds to get that done. We have a partial football team, I mean, a football field on Franklin Street behind the restaurant up there, but that's not a real football field. So we hope that we will be able to accommodate you one day officially. But right now, we can't accommodate anything unless you do use Austin Peay State University. And my other question, well, my concern, my question is this, how many injuries have you had since you had this? this. How many injuries have you had since you had this team of women? Pan football injuries or anything? I mean, you said it's tackled.
It is full tackle. Correct. Are we talking in the, in the specific? Rolled ankles, concussions?
Any serious?
I can answer that question for you. As a coach, last season, we had a total of three ankle injuries and one concussion.
One concussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Do these parents sign contracts before they play in this?
These, these young ladies who have taken the mothers, daughters, sisters, do sign a contract with the team to come out and give the time away from their families, sign a contract with the team to come out and donate their time to learn the game of football. And they have insurance that covers their injuries and things of that nature.
So y'all haven't had any lawsuits, have you?
No, ma'am, we have not.
Okay. All right, that's good.
Our team is women 18 and above.
That's okay. They can still get injured.
I just want to make sure that we're understanding it's not young girls.
Okay. Well, thank you so much.
Councilperson McLaughlin.
Woo!
I said crank it up.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Turn the volume up.
Thank you.
So on a positive note, I remember when the Clarksville Fox was here, they were a semi-professional women's football team. They partnered with the school system and used Northwest High School in Ward Two as their home field. They were very successful until the coaching staff ended up not being the coaching staff anymore. I'm excited for this opportunity for y'all to come to Clarksville. And, you know, over the years, I remember when I was in high school, 987 years ago, we had our first female wrestler on our high school team, and she was the only girl, and she was the groundbreaker. And as, as time has progressed, I've seen women get involved in more sports where people don't think are traditional for women and good. If, if you want to play a sport, you should be able to. And I feel like probably the majority of us are looking forward to the opportunity. And if, if Austin Peay doesn't work out, the mayor and I may have some pull at Northwest High School. Maybe we can help get you set up over there. But thank you for explaining it to us. And as you were making a statement about girls and young ladies who play sports end up being leaders, I think every single woman on this city council played a sport growing up, if I'm not mistaken.
Nope.
Okay, maybe not Amber, but.
I was a ballerina.
Yeah. But, but I had never thought, I had never thought about that perspective before you made that statement, so.
And so I'm going to turn around and face this way back quickly and introduce myself, and then I'll talk about some of it. So, and the reason why I do that is because I'm a Marine. I'm a Marine veteran. So thank y'all, first of all, for lining up the conversation and talking to y'all tonight. I'm Coach Fields. I'm the running back coach for Rachel Ortiz's team. I came here from the state of Utah where I coached three years out there for the Utah public. And doing so, I had the opportunity to take that team to the division championship two years in a row. I just missed the year before when joining that team of going to the championship with that team. And that team has been very successful. So I'm here to help this Rachel, take her team to the next level. In doing so, she has amassed a great coaching staff and a great bunch of players on this team to come together and learn about the game of football. And it takes pride, joy, and fortitude. And most of us guys know what fortitude is when we play football. It starts down here because the game of football is 5% mental, 95% heart. And so that's what we try to instill into them. So being the running back coach and the special team coach is my job. I have five, five, five things that I have to teach these young ladies that I have to get instilled into them. So with those five components, I have a great big job that I have to choose that I have to fill. So in doing so, it takes a lot of my time and it takes a lot of my attention to make sure that they're ready for game day. So trust me, it's not an easy thing to do. So what we did do was come here and speak to the council to let you know what it is that we're trying to do when it comes to having women's football team here in this backyard. Because like I said, these young ladies do put a lot of time into it. They're mothers, they have to work. There are sisters that have to take care of brothers and sisters. They're also educators. They have different jobs and different walks of life that they come from. And, but only, not only that, they decided to play a game that a lot of people say you shouldn't be playing, which is football. So outside of that, that is in my spiel for it. But also being a coach, I do a lot of recruiting. I do a lot of recruiting. And Rachel will tell you, I spend 90% of my time on the phone doing a whole lot of ground walking. And Ms. Allen can tell you, I do a whole lot of, a whole lot of ground walking for this team. So when I came in here, I asked just about everybody that was already here what your search last was. That's my recruiting spiel for this team. So I'm going to start with the mayor first and foremost. Mr. Mayor, you was assigned large.
Thank you for pointing that out, yes.
If you're going, Mr. Mayor, come on down. We're going to sign, we're going to sign the merit to a one-day contract.
Water boy! Woo, water boy!
Everyone in here tonight.
Yeah, I was going to say, Councilperson.
Eleven women are about to come in here and tackle today.
And we'll take this out for you.
Ah, Ms. Pitts is kind of strong.
It's not a schmiedium.
All the shirts say the same thing, and I hope it helps everybody. This is what it's going to look like.
That's our logo.
This is our logo.
Turn it around so we can see. Trojans.
So, Ms. Mayor, you standing in the middle?
Yes.
So, everybody's being signed to a one-day contract. And thank you very much for having us here. Next, okay. Next, I'm going to have, okay, we'll pack these out afterwards and everything. We've got three more questions, okay? And I'll get everybody their shirts.
I do want to make a very big point. My goal here is not just to say, hey, we want to play here. I want you to understand that we're here for those little young girls, girls in middle school, high school. And we can bring that partnership with Play Like a Girl here to the city of Clarksville. We're at STEM and sport working together. And our, all of our camps are completely free. So we want to make sure that, that we, you know, everything, and it may just be an hour away, 45 minutes away, but that can be cumbersome when you have to hit I-24.
Yeah, it's not an hour.
Because I get that going and doing business for the team or practices and games in Nashville. But I just want you to understand that I'm not just here for, for the team and the group of women and men that are, are on the team. I'm really here because I want my community to be, to be exposed to the strong women that are on the team.
Thank you. Councilperson Little.
Thank you. I'm excited about this. And I actually went to barber school with a girl who played on the, well, a lady who played on the Fox team. And let me tell you, she was an inspiration to everybody. And she made her presence known. And I wouldn't want to go toe-to-toe with her, so. I think this is amazing. It gives more opportunities for the city as it continues to grow. And just a lot of people are finding new activities to find and be a part of in Clarksville. I've already started following you on Instagram and Facebook, so I'll be keeping up with everything.
Councilperson Lovato.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for coming and talking to us and giving the presentation. I would just encourage you to chat with our Parks and Rec Department and see if that would be a good partnership. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
And Councilperson Smith, and then we're going to Councilperson Allen and wrap this up. You recognize.
I would also suggest that you go into the schools and talk to the students, you know, connect with the principal, of course, get permission. You know how to do that. And let the girls know. They might want to play. I might want to coach.
18. I'm joking. The good news is that we've built some relationships with the high school flag programs and taken into the physical education portion of it.
That's good.
Is there an age limit?
For, what do you think?
You're out of it.
18 and above. So as long as your body can, can handle it.
I had, I had a 57-year-old wide receiver in Utah.
Oh, awesome. Okay. Councilperson Allen for closing remarks.
I would like to thank you guys for coming out. Mr. Fields, thank you so much. Mr. Fields sat down with me and we were talking about other things. And he just so happened to start talking about what he does here in Clarksville. So as he started talking, I started getting really excited. I started saying, oh, my gosh, women's football? Okay, so I don't play football. I'm a ballerina, okay? But to have something that most girls don't feel like they can go out and play, especially being tackled, coming here to Clarksville, I think is an inspiration. And you guys, you, what I'd like to see you guys do is use everybody up here on this council, the people they're telling you to talk to, Parks and Rec. Shoot, talk to the street department if you have to. There are, there are people in this room, there are people in this room that can help you guys make Clarksville your home. I won't be here much longer, but there are people in this room that can make, help you make Clarksville your home. And it's a partnership. So if we don't have the resources right now, hey, you guys are coming here, you guys charge tickets, we can partner. There's things that we can do to make this thing big. We have other semi-pro teams and they've worked it out, too. So you guys can work it out, too. And I'm your biggest cheerleader because I'm not going to play. Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Marsh. Thank you, Coach, very much. We're now ready for the consent agenda. Madam Vice President, Clerk?
Whoa.
It's hot.
That's hot.
All items in this portion of the agenda are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and may be approved by one motion. However, a member of the council may request that an item be removed for separate consideration under the appropriate committee report. Ordinance 7, 2024-25, second reading, amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville, application of Jonathan Blick for zone change on a lot fronting on the north frontage of Dodd Street, 190 plus or minus feet east of the Dodd Street and Glenn Street intersection from R3, three-family residential district to R6, single-family residential district. Ordinance 8, 2024-25, second reading, amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville, application of Michael Booth for zone change on a parcel fronting on the west frontage of Dotsonville Road, 275 plus or minus feet south of Arrowfield Road and Dotsonville Road intersection from R2, single-family residential district to R6, single-family residential district. Ordinance 9, 2024-25, second reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designee to conduct negotiations and to enter an agreement for purchase of easements and or rights of way, or should negotiations fail to pursue condemnation through use of eminent domain for acquisition of property for a public purpose for Memorial Drive widening project. Ordinance 10, 2024-25, second reading, an ordinance amending the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year 2025 for governmental funds. Ordinance 106, 2023-24, for newly identified items. Ordinance 11, 2024-25, second reading, an ordinance amending the operating budgets for fiscal year 2025 for the internal service funds. Ordinance 101, 2023-24, for newly identified items. Ordinance 13, 2024-25, second reading, amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville, application of Timothy Baggett for zone change on the northeast corner of the Crossland Avenue and Kelly Lane intersection and the southeast corner of the Golf Club Lane and Kelly Lane intersection from R2, single-family residential district to R4, multiple-family residential district. Ordinance 15, 2024-25, second reading, amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville, application of William Tierney for zone change on a parcel of land fronting on the east frontage of Pembroke Road, 950 plus or minus feet north of the Tiny Town Road and Pembroke Road intersection from R1, single-family residential district to R4, multiple-family residential district. Ordinance 16, 2024-25, second reading, amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville, application of Reed Orlando Rudolph for zone change on a parcel of land fronting on the eastern frontage of North Whitfield Road, 250 plus or minus feet north of the Whitfield Road and Needmore Road intersection from AG Agricultural District to R5 Residential District. Resolution 51, 2024-25, a resolution approving appointment to the power board and minutes from September 5th, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Anybody wish to be recognized on the consent agenda? Councilperson Zacharias.
Thank you, Mayor. With the, the zoning case, I'll just call it the tiny home zoning case right there on Pembroke. I'm just going to ask everybody to consider some news that was recently announced or after this past first reading with the coming of Buc-Ee's to exit 89. Pembroke is going to be the only way for people in North Clarksville to get to that Buc-Ee's without taking the interstate. I really think we need to take a look at adding additional residential density to Pembroke. And I am going to try to have some talks with, like, the street department and maybe the Regional Planning Commission this week and find out if anybody is kind of looking at what that increase in traffic is going to do to Pembroke. Thank you.
Any other comment or question regarding the consent agenda, members? We all received an email on Monday from the proponent of Item B, Ordinance 8, 2024-25, on the consent agenda, promising a sidewalk in exchange for our approval. As a cautionary tale, this constitutes conditional or contract zoning, which is prohibited. And I encourage all those who are seeking council approval for their rezoning request to refrain from offering enticements in exchange for our approval. Any other comment or question? We're now ready for the Finance Committee report. Chairperson Streitman.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 18, 2024-25, first reading, ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from Montgomery County, Tennessee, to the city of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer line and lift station upgrade project. Both the Finance and Gas and Water Committees recommended approval. And Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask Mr. Riggins to come up here so we can talk about it.
Mr. Riggins?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Montgomery County owns this property through a tax sale. We approached, our staff approached Montgomery County about obtaining an easement on this property for the existing Ringgold Road lift station, improved that and pipeline improvements. And Mayor Golden reached out to me and offered up that they just donate this property in its entirety to us in lieu of giving us an easement. Well, one reason this property hasn't been built on, if you see an aerial, there's TVA access or power line access that comes through there. I do want to note that to the southeast, there's a large parcel there that the city of Clarksville already owns. This would give us additional street access to that property. And what we'll be looking at is, as I spoke with Mayor Pitts about, is what, what possibilities that may have for the city moving forward to do with all the property or at least a larger portion of that due to having that street access as well.
Okay, questions? Thank you.
All right, thanks, Senator.
Ordinance 19, 2024-25, first reading, an ordinance accepting the donation of certain real property from John Mark Holloman and Robert D. Holloman to the city of Clarksville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. Both Finance and the Gas and Water Committees recommended approval. This is just your regular run of the mill like we have voted on many a times before.
Questions or comments? Councilperson Holloman.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be abstaining on this as it is a family property. So that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comment or question? Chairperson Streitman.
Ordinance 20, 24-25, first reading, an ordinance amending Part II Code of Ordinances, Title IV Building Utility and Housing Codes, Chapter II Building Code of the City of Clarksville Official Code Relative to Non-Residential Building Permits. The Finance Committee recommended approval.
Comment or question? Councilperson Allen.
Is this just changing verbiage or is it changing the essence of it all?
This, this is going back and correcting a mistake I made when we, when we addressed commercial permit fees as part of the budget process. There was an obscure part of the code I overlooked that said that the, the plans review fee would be 50% of the permit. So what we're doing is go back and correcting that mistake, setting a floor of 200 setting a floor of two hundred and fifty dollars, but also saying we'll do it retroactive to July first.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comment or question? Chairperson Streitman.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance twenty-one, sorry, I just want to make sure I was on the right one, I apologize. Ordinance twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, first reading, an ordinance to amend the official code of the city of Clarksville, amending title four, building, utility, and housing codes to create a new chapter, chapter eleven, relative to third-party services and one section therein pertaining to third-party inspections and third-party examinations.
Questions? Chairperson Streitman.
Ordinance twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, an ordinance to amend the official code of the city of Clarksville, amending title five, business professions and occupations, chapter two, peddlers, to create a new section relative to a no solicitation list. The finance committee voted in favor of disapproval.
Councilperson Zacharias was the sponsor, and you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the ordinance that generated from the discussion item that I had on last month's executive session. Currently, it's possible for somebody who does not want to be targeted by solicitors to indicate that by hanging a sign. I'm just trying to give people one more way to do that that doesn't involve them putting a sign on their house. Thank you.
Questions for the sponsor? Councilperson Allen.
So, are you just adding number three? Or, I mean, I see it highlighted. Are you just adding that to the current ordinance?
No, that highlight was, was for my sake, for my benefit. That was a piece of the, of the ordinance that the city attorney and I had spoken about and he had highlighted that to bring it to my attention.
Okay, so...
All of this is new.
All of it's new.
All of it is new. Currently, there is no mechanism in place for the city to have a no solicitation list. We're trying to fix that.
And if, if this is done and we approve this or whatever, who runs it? Who, who takes care of this?
Okay, so this is an interesting question, because currently the finance department manages or administers the list of peddler permits. I have gotten feedback or information from our director of IT who says that based on what she is seeing other cities with a similar ordinance do, that it is her belief that we can do this at no cost to the city through the city's website where somebody would be able to log in, put their name on the list, and possibly even the solicitors would be able to pull a list, like, an up-to-date current list of those who are on the list and those who they should not be bothering.
Okay. No more questions.
Okay. Any more questions for the sponsor? Councilperson Streitman?
I know mine was a question.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. My question actually, it would be, if it's okay with you, I'd like to bring the chief of police up, just to ask some questions.
Chief Grochrill?
That's okay.
Thought you were going to retire without being before us, didn't you? February.
He's not.
We've had an ordinance to prohibit his retirement under new business.
Call for the question.
This isn't a voting meeting, sir.
Chief Grochrill, Councilperson Streitman?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief. I just wanted to, as the department that would have to handle these calls, can you talk to us a little bit regarding what your thoughts are on it? And if you think this is something that'll be, that will actually have been official for us?
Well, so I put a lot of thought into it, and I want to say, first off, that I enjoy the relationship that we all can have with department heads. And Mr. Zacharias, he knows what I feel about it, but there's no hard feelings. I mean, we work it out, we talk about it. So, I think the burden is, if I, if IT can make that happen, that's a pretty large burden that has been on my mind about controlling and keeping an updated list. If the list can't be updated momentarily, from that second, it's now invalid. It can't be maintained periodically. So, I wanted to say that. The burden will be on police officers to, to, to deal with these calls. And I think if you throw an opportunity for people to be proactive without ever having a solicitor at their door or never having received one, they're going to put their name on a list. And I would assume in time it would be thousands of addresses. So, that concerns me. We have about a hundred and fifty thousand incidents a year that we deal with. We're about a hundred officers short of where we should be, based on the growth of this city. And there's just a lot of things that happen that, in the end, police officers are the ones caught in the middle. Everyone knows the growth and, and in preparation for, you casually giving me a hint that I would be at the podium tonight around it. I reached out to Mr. Taylor and Mr. Tindall, just to supply some raw data to you today. With regards to us being a transient city, which we know we are, and adding an address to a list, and how short-term that may be in a military town, here's some, here's some numbers for you. On the connection side for CDE, in the month of August in twenty twenty-four this year, they had three, over three thousand connections that they set meters on. In the same month, they had nearly three thousand removals, for whatever reason. July twenty-four, thirty-six hundred connections, thirty-three hundred removals. August of twenty-three, over three thousand connections, nearly three thousand removals. Twenty twenty-three, new single homes from Mr. Tindall's team was eight hundred and five new addresses added to our city, six hundred and sixty-one of multifamily. So, what I'm trying to tell you is that this, this is a good idea, but we only receive about eighty-five on average calls a year for, for solicitors. And I, and there's a number of reasons why. Out of a hundred and fifty thousand calls a year, that is not, at this moment, a burden for our officers. If you throw an opportunity out there for people to get ahead, I think you may see, you know, they may jump on it. I think they would. I think it is a good idea. I think it's managing and dealing with it after the fact is troublesome. The current ordinance language is, to me, simple enough for an officer to deal with. If you post it, no trespassing, no soliciting. If they, if they show up and they, and that, and they violate that, the ordinance says that we can respond to that and, and try to do, to do our best to enforce that violation. In most cases, they, they are not on the property, you know? So, an officer doesn't witness them in violation. But at this, in this case, based on the ordinance we have now, we're dealing with people whether they have a permit or they don't. That's what we have. And in most cases, they, they have a permit and yet they're not even from the state. So, if we're talking about enforcement with something and dealing with solicitation and you violated without any signage or the risk of a list that isn't maintained, and now people are moving at this rate with this city and as it grows, it's thousands of changes constantly. So, it's key that, and I, and I hope Ms. Wilson can do what she says that she does, because I tell you, if, if it becomes an invalid list or it's no longer credible, I will not endorse it with my officers. Data, statute, ordinance, whatever's codified, has to be, you know, exact. And if we get, you know, a hint of, you know, that we're not going to have much luck with prosecuting in municipal court or in general sessions, we try to avoid it. And there's a lot of good statutes that are interpreted locally, you know, in courts that, you know, just don't have a lot of conviction rates. So, your example, sir, was, well, I had an individual that came, my house is posted and he came three times. Well, we're still right back, whether you have this list or not, with dealing with somebody who is violating the peddler's ordinance as it is now. And, and we can deal with that. We, we end up right back where we are, in my opinion, without creating a list of sorts that is constantly evolving. And, and I think that there is a chance that it may have to be staffed. In fact, that's what I'm worried about. I'm not one to take a lot of notes, but I didn't have a lot of time today, so I usually wing it. So, I did, I did type some stuff out, just for your information. I wouldn't, even in the slightest degree, believe that residents will update the list when they move. And that's in the ordinance. It's not going to happen. They're not going to update us. I do, I'm not an attorney, he is. But I also am a little bit leery of not allowing a peddler to come to a residence for two years when that person moved eighteen months ago. I think that that's a little risky with saying that someone can't solicit their product for a new tenant or a new resident. So, in, in these cases, they're, they're not necessarily criminal situations. We would basically now have a victim, because they're a victim, because you violated the, that I placed my residence on this list. And what is more like a civil situation in most cases, now we're kind of caught in a quasi-criminal investigation because we're not going to witness it. It would be a very low priority call, by the way, with, with, with the numbers that we have and officers. And you see the news, we got a lot going on, accidents. So, us getting there with my response time of seven minutes or less, I can't guarantee that will happen. They're not going to be on that property. So, we're going to have to try to locate the individual, try to enforce the ordinance as you, as you approve it, if you approve it, and backtrack and treat it like a burglary, to either get a confession or do you have ring cameras? So, I'm spending a lot of time trying to, to prove a case, to possibly write a citation and take them to municipal court when I don't think the violator's going to show up and I'm going to have to subpoena your resident. And if it ends up in a trespassing, maybe Chuck and I bounce these ideas off a lot, we were doing that today. If we ended up in a situation of criminal trespass, now your resident is the mercy of the docket, so there's a consequence for this if, if we end up doing it, if you all end up, end up doing it. The only consequence for the violator, if they don't pay the ticket or don't show up in court, is possibly a collection. I don't think I would have to talk to Ernie or Judge Smith, but this is not a moving violation. So, you know, Judge Smith can tell you a lot about overdue citations or whatever. There'll be no consequence, in my opinion, like a moving violations where they might get a failure to satisfy a citation and now we have a bookable offense. It will be at most, in my opinion, I don't know this for sure, but I think it would be at most a collection for a fifty-dollar fine. So, eighty calls a year, and that number has been going down in recent years. It could go up. I think it's, it's, it's a great idea. But maybe we've, maybe we haven't spent enough time trying to sort it all out too. And if we do, if it's not approved in this phase and it's something that we, we think the city does need, I would prefer that we, maybe we step into this and analyze it kind of pre-budget season, because what if we do need to staff it? And, and I can speak for my fellow departments who do amazing job with less in dealing with this growth. We're all pretty well at the limit of using the employees we got to get the jobs effectively well with what we got. So, that's, was there a question that I just throw all?
I think I asked you what your thoughts were. You gave them. I do have a question, and I apologize, I didn't do this, ask you this in advance. So, if you don't have the answer, that's on me. You mentioned, you know, eighty, eighty-five calls a year for people that are soliciting, are, in the last year. How many of those have permits and again, or had the peddler permit? And again, I'm asking you a question you may not know the answer to, and I apologize.
Well, we leaned on Ms. Mata also as we prepared for this. And I don't know if this answers your question or not, but we're, we're issuing different types of peddler permits. A lot of them are food trucks nowadays, and I think, I think Chuck was told by Ms. Mata that majority are food trucks. And that's a whole nother ball of wax and a different type of solicitor or vendor even. So, I'm just going to revert back to my experience on the road, however many years ago that was, and we dealt with that. I think in most cases, they did have the permit, but they were from out of state or what have you. We did also contacted Mr. Ernie about, you know, looking back over a number of years. And, you know, there was well over a hundred citations written. So, it does happen where they're citing them to court. The success of them showing up for court, I don't, I didn't ask that question. We can, I can ask Ernie, you know, are they showing up? I think it's unlikely, because in my experience, they were selling their product, coming in by a van load, and, and they were from out of state, as far as Colorado, we were talking about today, so.
Okay. And I'm, one last thing is, I'm going to agree with something that you did state in regard to the sponsor of this ordinance, knowing how you feel. In the finance committee, he was very open and honest in what your feelings were on it. And I imagine tonight, he was just aware that somebody would bring you up here. So, he definitely delivered your message well in the finance committee.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of screwed up and ducked out on y'all.
I wasn't trying to say that.
The mayor got on me a little bit, but I didn't.
I'm so sorry, I wasn't saying that.
I had trouble a little bit, but, but I know that you told me, and that's, that was what my comments about. Even though I had, I left too early, the respect is, well, I'm going to go ahead and tell you his negative views of this. And I think that's what an awesome advantage we have when we walk through these issues is, like Eric said, we don't always have to agree, but, you know, at least we, we step through them professionally.
That's all, sir.
Councilperson Allen.
I have questions, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and maybe this isn't you. So, they come to the city, they get a permit, right? They go through Ms. Mata's office?
At one step, yes, ma'am. They, they kind of begin there and they end there when they pay. They, they, in the middle, they're in our building, background checks, you know, we check them for convicted felons and do somewhat of a background, court records. And then if approved, then they're, that message is sent back to, to finance and revenue and Ms. Mata takes their money for their, their approved permit.
And that's for anybody that wants to go knocking on doors? Not, I'm not talking about, like, elected officials, I'm talking about peddlers.
As far as I know, you know, there's a vendor side of that, I think more like a food truck. And then there's the door-to-door residence kind of thing that we're, that we're talking about right now.
So, if you put a no soliciting sign on your door, that permit, that person knows they're not supposed to knock?
If it's posted, it can be no trespassing, no soliciting. And there's one other quote in the peddlers section now, it also talks about time of day, dusk to dawn. But the part two of that mentions that you're unlawful on their property if this is posted. And then they're in violation of that ordinance if we can, you know, catch them on the property.
So, this is going to, this is going to sound really naive. Why isn't, if they're violating and knocking anyway when they know they're not supposed to, why are they still coming back and being granted a permit? Why isn't there something that stops them from being able to get a permit? Hey, we've had twenty-seven calls, you guys are violating the no solicitors. They have signs on their doors and everything like that. Why isn't that stopping them from getting the permit versus a criminal offense? Why isn't it something, hey, you can't come and peddle anymore in this city because you're violating?
The permit is issued to the individual, not to the company. And so, another individual representing the same company may present themselves in revenue. That's, that's the difference.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And we don't know how often they're returning either, you know, there, I don't guess there's a database set up like that either where...
I got it. That's why I said it might sound naive. Thank you.
Any more questions for the chief? Councilperson Zacharias, closing remarks.
Thank you. I do have a question for chief. Yes, sir. If somebody calls you, calls CPD because somebody, a peddler has knocked on their door and they had a no soliciting sign, are any of the concerns that, about what happens after that as far as showing up for court different if the reason that they called you is if their name is on a no solicitation list?
Well, the only difference would be, we don't need the resident. You know, we, we can, we can go ahead and issue that, you know, in most cases. It's, it's about, right now, it's about whether they have a permit or not. There's still the trespassing part. Again, they're going to be away from that. Nothing, not a lot changes, you know? It's mostly about, in the end here, the log, the staffing, whether we have basically a victim conducting an investigation, where most of our calls at eighty to eighty-five is where they're, they're peddling without a permit.
All right. So, I'm glad you mentioned the eighty to eighty-five. Because if that's the metric that we're using to determine whether or not this is necessary, I'll start calling. Like, I can, like, my household could bump up that number ten percent in a year. But we just don't call because we know you're busy. I think you're right. People are going to sign up for this list. Goodlettsville's list was twenty-three pages. That's how bad people want this. Whether it was chickens, towing yards, towing lots and wrecker yards, of anything that I've, I've taken to the people of Ward One, this is the only one that has had nearly, actually, one hundred percent approval. There was one person who, who was not so sure that it was necessary. He brought up the transient nature of people in Clarksville. That's why we included some. nature of people in Clarksville. That's why we included something in the ordinance where a name or an address would fall off the list after two years. And again, I'd like to point out, when you said that this is not something that you are going to require your officers to, I don't remember the terminology that you used, but I understand and I agree with that fully, and that is why I think it's good that this ordinance gives the city the ability to create this list. It does not require that the city does it, and if it turns out that it is impossible, it is unrealistic, it's unfeasible, it's unmanageable, it's unfundable, then we have the ability to say, okay, this is not going to work. But I, personally, this is the case that I'm making to the members of the council. I think this is something that the people want and could serve the citizens of Clarksville.
To be clear, I said I couldn't endorse a, I guess, a process or a system that was, it was losing its credibility, or it became, it was instantly becoming invalid, and officers getting caught in the confusion of, well, I had just picked this list up this morning, and two in the afternoon it's changed, and now they're at a house that just was added. You know, we're going to use our discretion to the benefit in certain ways. That's what I was referring to.
And I hope that I didn't make it seem like I was accusing you of instructing your officers not to enforce anything, nothing like that at all.
Yes, sir.
Again, because I think my goal with this was maximum flexibility. Like, let's give the city the authority to do this thing that people want if it is within the city's power to provide that service, and that's what the ordinance does.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, chief, and thank you, Counselperson Zacharias. Chairperson Streitman.
Thank you, chief. Resolution nineteen, twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the City of Clarksville Police Department and the City of Knoxville Police Department pertaining to the Tennessee Internet Crimes Against Children ICAC Task Force. The Finance Committee recommended approval. Mayor, could we ask the chief to come up here to talk about this one?
Chief, would you come back?
Absolutely. There'll be, this is a no-brainer. Internet crimes against children, we already conduct them. We want to join the task force officially by MOU. What that costs us is none. What we get is support from the federal government in the form of the technology software training.
Thank you, sir.
Chairperson Streitman.
That concludes my report, sir.
Okay, all right. Now, we're ready for the Gas and Water Committee. Chairperson Holloman, you're recognized.
Thank you, mayor. We'll have a full report next week.
Okay. Neighborhood and Community Services Committee, Chairperson Shakina, you're recognized.
Thank you, mayor. I'll have a full report next week.
Parks and Recreation Committee, Chairperson Zacharias, you're recognized.
Thank you, mayor. I will also have a full report next week.
Public Safety Committee, the chair will have a full report next week. Transportation, Streets and Garage Committee, Chairperson Smith.
I have a full report October the third.
Okay, next month, all right. The, we have old business, item A, ordinance one fourteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Item was postponed at the September fifth, twenty-two four regular session. If you'll recall, we, I announced the wrong vote tally on a particular amendment, so I'm going to ask Mr. Bittner if he wouldn't mind give us the current posture of this ordinance and any amendments attached there, too. How does that sound? I've been reading.
Okay. At our last meeting, the vote tally was actually six to six. The day after the meetings, the city attorney office, we always go back, we review the meeting, and that error was discovered. It was also pointed out to me by a viewer in the audience. I told her I'd give her a shout-out, but.
My daughter.
Yeah. Forgot her name, but it was the Councilperson Goff's daughter.
Caitlin McLaughlin.
Caitlin McLaughlin. Very good. Thank you for pointing that out. So, if it was sixty-six, the McLaughlin amendment failed, and we will go back and pick up Counselperson Wanda Smith's amendment for discussion.
Okay. So, Counselperson Smith is the sponsor. You are recognized.
Thank you, mayor. As I said, and y'all heard me say this over and over again, that this ordinance was brought forth to answer questions and concerns from our residents and business owners about the well-being of the city, the city's safety, as well as the health of our citizens. The principle of this ordinance is to analyze or explore how the impact of alcohol attributes to Clarsfield crime rates, DUIs, public intoxication, fatal accidents, underage consumptions of alcohol, health issues, and how we can go forth on making a better resolution. I know now that the city ordinance in place now allows two liquor stores to open every even year for six thousand residents. This could be changed to allow license for liquor stores to open every four to six years based on a review of the city's statistics, crimes, and DUIs, accident, underage drinking, and so on. Today, we have sixteen liquor stores, well, fourteen open, six, two other liquor stores to open soon. I don't know how soon. I just want to share something. I don't want to read everything that I have because y'all heard me about this, but I want to commend the Main Street newspaper for putting this information in their paper, keeping up with what is really going on in Clarksville. And what I'm really talking about is the Clarsfield motorcycle fatalities. It says nearly tripled in three years. Statistics released by the Clarsfield Police Department show an increase in motorcycle fatalities that have nearly tripled since 2021. With the continued news coverage of motorcycle crashes and fatalities in the city, Main Street Clarsfield reached out to the police department to see the actual statistics. And you all need to get this paper. It's dated September the twelfth, 2024. I would not read all of this, but they have done a good job in keeping up with what is going on in this city. So, I want to commend them on that. Also, I spoke with, well, I didn't speak with Chief Crockwell, but I wrote him a, I texted him or I wrote him an email. I asked him, I said, how many crashes were fatalities? Just the recent ones? And I asked him from May of 2024 to September to this day. It wouldn't be on this day, would have probably been two or three days ago. And there was a total of eighty-one fatal crashes due to alcohol. No, there was three fatal crashes of motorcycle accidents, I believe. Yeah, about two weeks ago. But there were seventy-eight total crashes allegedly involved alcohol in that timeframe. So, that's a total of eighty-one crashes, just May, June, July, August, September, about four months. So, I think that the reason I'm bringing this up, and I would add, is because we need to do something about this, and I want to thank you all for voting down the last amendment to my ordinance, because I know that you're serious about doing something to maybe help curtail or decrease DUIs for underage drinkers. And statistics shows that we do have that. Someone mentioned that it was going down, the death rates. No, it's going up. And so, I just want to thank the council for opening their minds and analyzing this problem. It is a serious problem. And so, I just hope that we can brainstorm and try to come up with something. And I'm thinking maybe we can do four to six years before we open another liquor store. Let us look at it. Let us analyze it. Let us just not make quick decisions, because we need to do something about this. I'm getting calls almost every day about this. I've had somebody call me, said, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. It's not about Wanda. It's about our citizens that are dying at an early age, premature deaths because of alcohol. Also, I done some more research, and I found out that the surrounding number of liquor stores that are in cities that's close to Clarksville, I found that in Hopkinsville, they have seventeen liquor stores. That's right up the street from us, with a population of approximately thirty-three thousand people. In O'Grohe, which is probably fifteen minutes from us, they have five liquor stores. In Guthrie, they have two liquor stores. And at Fort Campbell Army Base, I called and I done my research, they have one liquor store on the base, but they have six other stores that sell liquor and wine. And so, I think with all of these liquor stores that are surrounding this city, we don't need to open any more liquor stores. I think we need to pause it for a little while as we take a look at it. Let us analyze this. Thank you, mayor.
Okay. Counselperson Allen, you're recognized.
I have a question for the sponsor.
Go right ahead.
You talked about motorcycle accidents. Are you saying that all the motorcycle accidents in the last few weeks are all alcohol-related?
No, three fatal crashes that were involved with alcohol.
Three?
That's just three from about, I'll say, last week that we was in, let me see, about two weeks ago. Three.
So, you weren't, because I'm a motorcycle rider, I'm sitting up here, and I know, I know the difference between people going down on their bikes and people going down because of alcohol. There's two, that's two different stories. So, that's why I'm asking the question about the whole motorcycle thing that you brought up. Are those motorcycle accidents because of alcohol?
Yes, ma'am. Fatal means death. Fatal accidents. That's when I said fatal, that means death. They die.
Okay.
That's what that means. So, it was three fatal accidents involving alcohol about two weeks ago, and that's one too many.
Well, yeah.
And then we had seventy-eight total crashes involving alcohol from May to September. And that's just what, four months, May, June, July, August, September, four months?
Okay.
And this year. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, so, this is what I'll say. I'll say that just because there were fatal accidents, and there were accidents that involved alcohol, like I've said this entire time, if we are not limiting how much alcohol is sold in the liquor stores, whether it's one or ten or fifty-three, if we're not limiting the alcohol, then we're not doing anything. We're not making, we're not making alcohol less available unless we are going into the bars and saying, you can't sell alcohol anymore. Okay, grocery store, you can't sell wine. Okay, bar, you can't sell your mixed drinks. We're not doing anything to prevent the problem. Open up another liquor store. Most people that frequent liquor stores, and I don't drink, but most people that frequent liquor store, they take their liquor home because, you know, we were all there at one point. What I, I'm not understanding why we're only, if we're going to do this, why are we only targeting liquor store? Why aren't we targeting Walmart? Why aren't we targeting Kroger's that sells wine? Why aren't we targeting the corner store, the gas station that sells beer? It's not only liquor that causes death because of alcohol. It's a whole lot of other alcohol on the market besides just liquor. Liquor stores only sell liquor. They can't sell beer. They can sell wine, but they cannot sell beer. So, that, if we're going to solve a problem, we need to really look into the problem. We cannot just say, okay, just because the liquor store, that's the whole problem. None of the other things matter. I don't think that's fair to our retailers that do sell liquor. Thank you.
Counselperson McLaughlin, I'll come to you for closing remarks.
Thank you, mayor. Okay. Thank you, mayor. A couple of things. While the sponsor of the amendment was speaking, I was looking at the chief of police in the back room who was shaking his head about the numbers that were shared. So, I'm not going to ask now, but if maybe the chief would be able and willing to send us, all of us, the stats based on alcohol-related before next week, if that's possible. Appreciate it. Previous speaker kind of touched on, one of my concerns is that I don't know if anybody can provide stats on any alcohol-related accidents that specify where the alcohol came from. Alcohol is an overarching thing. There's liquor purchased in liquor stores, but as a previous speaker mentioned, you can buy beer and wine in most gas stations, grocery stores, et cetera. Most businesses that are restaurants, a sit-down restaurant in Clarksville provides some kind of alcohol, and then you have your taverns. So, unless the sponsor of the amendment is wanting to take any kind of alcoholic beverage out of all businesses in Clarksville, this makes no sense. And as we've mentioned before, I specifically and a few others, we're not limiting other businesses in Clarksville either. So, I'll leave, that'll conclude my comments for tonight, but I will have an amendment next week. Thank you.
Counselperson Holloman.
Thank you, mayor. So, if you look at it, greater accessibility does lead to increased use. I mean, that's just how it works. I mean, I'm talking from experience here, you know. I've not drank alcohol in many, many years, but, you know, I did used to have a problem. So, I know for a fact just the damage it has. What I think we should do is, I think we should limit the liquor stores, and then as well as look at limiting these smoke shops that are around town and creating a tax base for that, pending state approval, of course. But the thing is, you know, it's kind of interesting, like, if you look around in our society, like, five years ago, like, we didn't have all this stuff, like, all these shops, like, and all these problems. If you study history, if you look at the Chinese opium wars, there's a lot of really interesting similarities, and so, it's something that, you know, if you are curious about and just want to study up on, it's quite interesting, but that's all I've got. Thank you.
Okay. Any more commoner question before I call on the sponsor? Counselperson Smith for closing remarks.
Thank you, mayor. And about the statistics, I'm glad you said that, war two. Here is what I received from Chief Crockwell's office, and I tried to be specific with him, and he said, three fatal crashes allegedly involved alcohol during that timeframe. He also says seventy-eight total crashes allegedly involving alcohol in that timeframe. And I tried to get him to unpack what he mean in that timeframe. And so, this is what I have. This is what he sent me, and here it is here. Not my handwriting, not my typing. This is from the chief's office, okay? And so, I didn't make this up because I don't know. I don't do the investigations. I just want to make that clear, okay? And so, I hope he would send out something that would pinpoint exactly the timeframe, okay? Thank you for that. Also, I would say, no, we don't know where they got the liquor from, and you're right. But why shouldn't we make a decision to help decrease the accessibility of buying alcohol? Why should we keep pushing into it or buying into, oh, let's keep opening more. We get more revenue, someone said. One of the councilwomen said, we get more revenue if we just keep opening liquor stores. Well, is that worth one more death? Not under my watch. I would not want to open another liquor store. We know that they sell wine, they sell beer, they sell liquors, all kinds. I've been in the liquor stores. I know. I don't drink. I don't smoke, but I went in there because I wanted to see all of the liquor. And I mean, it's a lot, huge. So, what I'm saying is this. Yeah, we don't know where they bought the liquor, but they got drunk, and they had a crash, and they died. That was somebody's father, granddaddy, uncle, somebody, family member. So, we, as a council, we can help decrease the accessibility of getting more alcohol. Yeah, and if y'all want to include Walmart, that's such a big giant, you know? But where we can make a difference, let us make the difference. Let us be the world changers. Let us be the one to say, not under my watch, not another death. If I can help it, if I can stop another liquor store from opening, let me be that change. Let me be the one to say, it wasn't under my watch, or if they went to Hoptown and got the liquor, you can say, well, they didn't buy from here. Not under my watch. So, yeah, we're not trying to prevent anybody from opening a business, but if you look at the pros and the cons of alcohol, you will see the pros outweigh the cons. We, as city council, we need to do something to help decrease, not to bring more in this city. We have enough. We have so many in surrounding counties and cities, seventeen again, as I said, in Hoptown, liquor store, right up the street, O'Grohe Five, right up the street. And everybody I talked to, I called people to ask them. And everybody I talked to, I called people to ask them, what, what is your take on? They said, please don't open no more liquor stores. We're not trying to prevent anybody from opening a business. Let them open something where they can give out some more food or something to help somebody, not to harm anybody. Let's open something that's not harmful. We have enough liquor stores in this city. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is public comments. Our code allows for three people, five minutes each. Any member of the public wish to address the council? Please come forward, give us your name, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Bryce Powers, and thank you for your kind words earlier. I'm here to speak briefly on ordinance 20 that relates to the building permit fee schedule. As you all know, you guys approved a significant change to the permit schedule back in July. It not only changed how it was calculated, the mechanism of it changed it from cost of construction to dollar per square foot. It also changed the overall dollars very significantly. And although I appreciate the effort that this ordinance is going to provide to lower the plans review part of this from 50% to 10%, as Mayor alluded to earlier, I just don't think this is quite enough. And I think we need to take a minute and try to figure out how to better look at a fee schedule that's more equitable to our peer cities around middle Tennessee and more equitable, equitable for the building community as well as a whole. A collaborative effort is always going to provide a better solution than just something that happens without any discussion with the people who are most impacted. In my experience, 20 years here in Clarksville in the building industry, I can't recall another significant change to a department like Gas and Water or CDE or Building Codes even, that we haven't had some sort of, hey, guys, this is coming, let's talk about it, let's present it and take feedback. So these permit, commercial permit fees have gone up as much as 1,200%. A permit that might have been $5,000 back in June of this year is now $58,000. I mean, it is tremendously a, a, a big change and impactful to the building, the building community. And I'll stand here and say very publicly, the fees need to go up. They have been low, too low for too long. And I do appreciate the fact that this, the ordinance back in July did not change residential because we want to keep housing affordable and that is important. So all the efforts were on raising commercial. Again, I stand here and say that needed to be done, just not to 1,200% because the reality is the cost of building codes hasn't gone up that same amount too. And I think at some point we have to say, this is what it costs to operate a department and let's set fees that cover that. I sat on the planning commission for 12 years and we voted a significant change to the zoning, rezoning fees during my time there, and I made the motion for that approval. But what we did is we looked at what it was costing the RPC to, to advertise, put signs out, all those things, and we took that cost and said, hey, this is an appropriate fee to cover that cost. That's all I'm asking here, is we look at what the cost it is to, for building codes and have a fee schedule that, that absolutely covers that cost. But building codes shouldn't make a thousand percent profit on fees going up this much. And I'd like to give an example, and I know I'm limited on time, but for example, you take a 20,000 square foot building, pretty significant sized building, and say it's a complete medical office, it's built out, ready to occupy, got all these systems in there, that building permit fee is going to be the same, exact same, as a retail shell building that doesn't yet have a tenant. Maybe it has a gravel floor in there because they don't have a user yet. Because it's based off square footage, those two permit fees are the same. And I think we could all agree, the effort from building codes is not the same from an inspection standpoint. A shell building out on Madison Street, there's four walls, a roof and a parking lot, has probably three inspections is all that codes has to do because it's a shell building. A medical office building may have 25 inspections over the course of the project. And so all I'm asking is we need some differentiation between projects and the best way to do that is cost of construction because it costs less to build four walls and roof than a fully built out building. And so I think we need to go back from using a per square foot number as our calculator, our unit, and use cost of construction. Now, everybody's going to say, hey, that's been abused over the years. Absolutely agree with you. As a person who always accurately reports my cost of construction because I want to pay the correct permit fee, I say, let's just work on transparency. Let's don't change the system, let's fix the errors in the current system because the cost of construction is the best way to measure building codes effort and therefore the permit fee that should be covering that. So I would say the more accountability, more review would be the right way to do that. And I would parallel that with, you go to the county clerk's office and say you buy a used car for $10,000. You have to write that on that title, right? You take it in, say, a registered vehicle's $10,000, you're going to pay tax. If you say, no, I'll put $5,000, I won't cheat the system, save me some taxes. The clerk's office has a little database that says, no, that your car's worth about $10,000. And they're going to say, no, you got to pay taxes on $10,000. That's a similar mechanism I think we could do here at building codes. We all know what construction costs. You know, a shell building is probably going to cost $150 a square foot. A medical office building is probably going to cost $400 a square foot. I can give you those numbers and I think if we could just create some sort of, I could use the word dummy check because that's what the DMV does. If you buy that car for 10, you write nine on it, they're probably going to let it slide because that's close enough to what it ought to be, that kind of passes the dummy check. And so I think we could do that same thing here. And I'll close with this, I, what I'm asking of you tonight, obviously to hear what I'm trying to say, but I think the best way to approach this-
Mr. Powers, your five minutes is up.
Can I have 30 seconds?
Your five minutes is up, sir. Thank you. All right. Next citizen, you're next in line, sir. Give us your name and you have five minutes.
I live on Madison Street. Mayor Piper, council members. I'm here to speak on the subject of handicap parking violations. Many Clarksvilleians blatantly use handicap parking spaces illegally. You can drive through a Walmart parking lot and see at least two violations. The city has no concern about this. On three occasions, I phoned in violations and all three times, the responding officers refused to cite the offender. Twice, they said they were using their discretion. Once, the officer said they weren't allowed to write citations for violations on private property, which ended up being ridiculous because I contacted the chief on that. Didn't even ask the guy to move his vehicle. Anyway, besides government buildings, businesses are the only places that have handicap parking. Without enforcement, they might as well not have those marked handicap parking slots. Clarksville has a good police department, however, they're letting down the entire handicap community and the city government is allowing this to happen. I've spoken before to this council about this problem and my words were totally ignored. I don't know what else to do except say I'm damn disappointed in the city on this issue. After I spoke to the council, two council members approached me and said they support what I said, that they themselves often witness violations, but even they are not calling them in. The city council is fully aware that this is going on, doing nothing to help the handicap community. How difficult would it be for the city to announce that they're going to begin enforcing these things using radio, print and other social media? That, that newspaper that was held up would be a good one. How difficult would it be for a patrol car to go through a Walmart parking lot and find these violators I see every week? These examples show the police department does not want to enforce handicap parking violations, does not want to support the handicap community. I call on the council to tell the police department to begin enforcing all handicap parking violations without officers using their discretion against it. And I call on the citizens of Clarksville to report by calling 911 any violations they see. You owe it to the people of Clarksville to do your job in all aspects. I will continue to pursue this subject till I see definite distinct change in the city governments and the police department's behavior. So far, it's a damn shame.
Mr. Colback, I'm going to stop you right there. Profanity is not allowed or encouraged, so if you wouldn't mind, clean up your language, please, sir. You're recognized.
Do something about this. How much time do I got left?
You got two minutes and 10 seconds.
Alpha, beta, gamma, delta, epsilon, zeta, eta, theta, iota, kappa, lambda, mu, nu, xi, omicron, pi, rho, sigma, tau, epsilon, phi, ki, psi, omega. How much time I got left now?
This is not a question and answer.
All right. Alpha, beta, gamma, delta, epsilon, zeta, eta, theta, iota, kappa, lambda, mu, nu, xi, omicron, pi, rho, sigma, tau, epsilon, phi, ki, psi, omega. Alpha, beta, gamma, delta, epsilon, zeta, eta, theta, iota, kappa, lambda, mu, nu, xi, omicron, pi, rho, sigma, tau, epsilon, phi, ki, psi, omega. I think I'm done. I think you guys get my message. Thank you.
We have room for one more person to speak for five minutes. You would give us your name and you have five minutes.
My name is Candace Payne. I've been before you all about a month ago. I just want to give you all a reminder that I'm still living in a flooded home. Today is May the tw, I'm sorry, today is the 26th. My house flooded on May 26th and 27th. This makes my own four months that I've been dealing with this. Now, everyone's going to leave here and go home and hopefully go and enjoy their weekend. And I've got to go home and stress and pray as to whether the drain, the drain at the end of my street is going to flood my house again. I need this body to make some type of changes and some moves because I should not be in this situation. It again has been four months. I've only heard from maybe two members on the council and I appreciate you reaching out to me. But that's all the concern that I'm seeming to get from, again, this body. I'm not sure how long anyone would expect to deal with a flooded home. Nearly 11 to 1,200 feet of my house is completely gutted. I cannot use it at all. I have no toilet, no bathroom, no closets, no nothing, no floors. Because again, the drain at the end of my street on the Alberta Drive has flooded my home. I was not made aware of it. I purchased the home November of 2020. I wouldn't have bought this house had I known that there was a drain one building away that would flood it. I have put my entire life into this home. I have lost all of my, my personal belongings. My family member has lost all of her belongings. And then to add insult to injury, I lost all of my mother's belongings when she, of course, passed away two weeks before I closed on this home. So again, y'all are going to go home and enjoy your weekend. I've got to go home and pray that this rain does not cause that drain to back up in my house to flood. So again, I'm asking you all to make some type of changes and make some improvements because this isn't, this isn't okay, especially knowing that my neighborhood and my home in particular has flooded multiple times over the last four decades. How is that possible? How is the house still there? How was it able to be sold? Nobody can explain that to me. I was not told, I repeat that again, I was not told of any prior floods at that address before I bought the house. This isn't okay. I literally have mice in the walls that are coming in from my basement. I'm listening to mice in the walls playing while I'm working. How sane could any person be doing, dealing with that? And this week, today, makes four months. Today and tomorrow is exactly four months from when the house flooded. I took on two feet, two to three feet in the house, the entire lower level. My garage, my front yard, my backyard, my neighbors couldn't even access their own driveway because of a city maintenance rule. Again, this isn't okay. So I'm just here to remind you all, as I said at the last meeting, I will be here again with my Alberta Drive shirt on as long as I have to live in this house. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment period. Now we're ready for mayor and council member comments. Any member of council have a comment? All right. Thank you. We are now getting ready to enter the non-public attorney-client privilege review by the city attorney. We'll invite the public to please leave while we hear from our city attorney. We will be back to adjourn this- Lieutenant Gill.
Sir.
We're hot. Madam Clerk, are you, are you ready? Okay, we are resuming the executive session of September the 26th, 2024. We're coming out of the non-public attorney-client privilege review by our city attorney. We are now on the public consideration. There will be no vote because this is a non-voting meeting on the settlement demand for Dylan Stacey versus Clarksville Police Department, City of Clarksville and Detective Alquazini. Mr. Bittner?
Yes, so we did meet in closed attorney-client privileged meeting. No discussion took place. I did answer questions and we will have the vote regarding the counter offer at the regular section next week.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are adjourned until next week.
That concludes your report.
That concludes my report.